This is the first one, huh? First farewell.
Right.
Yeah, I guess that's right.
Yeah, it was. It was just.
I figured somebody should show up.
Forty-one.
Jack, Jack was there too.
Thank you.
He was born.
I'll make it.
It's terrible when you don't even charge.
I believe.
We got these little charges. You have two of them.
Good evening, Lake Forest, and welcome to the March fourth, 2019 session of the Lake Forest City Council. Will the clerk please call the board?
Certainly. Honorable Mayor Lansing.
Here.
Alderman Beidler.
Here.
Alderman Morris.
Here.
Alderman Newman.
Here.
Alderman Rommel.
Here.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Here.
Alderman Prashlak.
Here.
Alderman Moreno.
Here.
Alderman Bushman.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Will you all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, universal, with liberty and justice for all? All right, so the agenda. First, I'm guided by the mayor. I just had some short comments. First, I hope you may have missed that the Parks and Rec Department applied for and received in February a state grant to cover half of a total of $560,000 of South Park improvements. Improvements to this very actively used active park, I think that's the terminology. And frankly, fifteen years or twenty years since we've had such an upgrade, it will be noticeable. A number of new amenities and activities, parking and so forth, are coming as part of this upgraded trails. So congratulations, and I think it'll be a very noticeable addition to our community, as was this morning at 7:15 a.m. Was it right on time?
It was.
Right on time. It was the first of the first phases of the enhanced passenger schedule by Metro to serve Lake Forest and some other communities with the arrival of the express train, Morning Express, out of Chicago to Lake Forest. And there were some very brave souls there. One Alderman said it was minus two.
Three.
Okay.
Minus three.
I was there this morning. And as we've talked about before, over the next several weeks, the enhancements of the schedule in the morning and afternoon will continue to roll out. And in April, there'll actually be a more formal celebration, if you will, of the start of this service. I don't know if that you or not.
Oh, did mine not, huh? Yep. There were several of us, apparently.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Much better. Sorry. I thought I had turned off. And then lastly, I believe Alderman Bushman and Moreno wish to tell us about a recent event.
Very good.
Do you mind?
We could go Sunday at the West Train Station, the train station where the express showed up this morning at 7:15. There was a community event, and the community event was titled "Winter Wellness." There were about twenty exhibitors there, some very familiar names like Kindles, and there were some newcomers to our community. And one in particular is the new coffee shop that's going to be going into the West Train Station. It's called Terrapin Station. And the proprietor, Rob Dupont, was kind enough to set up a little stand there and offer free coffee, tea, and cocoa to the guests. And there were over 100 people that did show up for this event, besides Alderman Moreno and myself. There was some nice press coverage on that, and thank you. And thanks to all of those who were involved in making this community event available and so successful, in particular, the organizers, Deborah Fisher, Emily Lane, Rebecca Asfor, and Amy Riker. And I'm also happy to report that this coming Sunday, we have a second pop-up event. This one's called Volunteer Fair. It's -- so mark your calendar. It's an opportunity to learn about different organizations that are looking for volunteers. And it's a great way to get a better understanding of what's available and what may be of interest to you. Hopefully, you'll be able to find something that is of interest, keeping in mind, the monetary pay is not there, but there is a great deal of heartfelt thanks that comes from doing volunteer work. And I hope to see you then. And as a reward, the next pop-up event of the three is going to be held on Sunday, April 14th. It's called the Foodie Fair, an opportunity to be rewarded with hopefully some nice delicacies and to feast and enjoy. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Maybe just, if I may add, do come. It's really a lot of fun. I did get a preview of the Foodie Fair at the wellness event. There were microgreens, which were really yummy, and certainly a lot of other wellness-oriented activities and tables. I think the Foodie Fair will be especially exciting because there will also be ethnic foods, which will be a lot of fun. So it'll be like traveling without having to go miles and miles. Thanks.
Exactly. Wonderful. Thank you. That completes the mayor's comments. Next is comments by the city manager, Jason Wisher.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. I have just one brief update or reminder, both for the council and for the public. The Finance Committee is scheduled to meet next Monday on March 11th to discuss the proposed FY '20 budget. So as a reminder, the meeting is held over at the Municipal Services Building, and will begin at 5:00. And I believe we'll have budget packets sent out to the council tomorrow. So happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, that concludes my report.
We'll get a good night's sleep for night and day. Thank you. Next, our committee reports, starting with the Public Works Committee. First item is approval of Public Works Committee's recommendation to award a bid for the North Beach Access Road landslide restoration project to John Keno and Company in the amount of $2,088,000. In addition, approval of a 10% engineering and/or construction contingency in the amount of $208,000 to be presented by Michael Thomas, the Director of Public Works.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. This evening, staff is pleased to present to yourselves and the community Public Works Committee's recommendation of award a bid for the Forest Bluff Failure Project. We're excited to get started, and we will, based upon city council's approval. This evening, we're going to give a brief overview, background of where we were, project design features, the bid process, the bids that we received, the project budget, the committee's recommendation, the proposed timeline, the construction route, and then we'll end with some question and answer. So to bring everybody up to speed, October 15th, city council approved Option 3A, which included extending the roadway and constructing the project from the bottom up, meaning we're going to bring in a good amount of fill. We'd bring the roadway further east. And 3A extended this project a little bit further south. We wanted to make sure we did this once and didn't have to come back. Council also approved agreements with AECOM for the full design, to do a traditional bid design project, and then as well as remove the existing boardwalk on the south end. That was completed by our Parks and Forestry staff in December. Some of the design features, reconstructing the roadway, as I mentioned, aligning the roadway further east, stabilizing the slope with approximately 24,000 yards of CA6. CA6 is stone about the size of a quarter. It has fines, and you mix it, and it almost turns into concrete, so it's very solid. We would relocate both the storm and sanitary sewers, and then install groundwater piping, under drains, et cetera. Those sand seams on top of forest parks still will be there. They'll still have water draining towards this area, so we need to catch that storm water, put it into our storm sewers. Features and things that we discovered during the design that we didn't know back on October 15th. An additional 20 feet of slope, we need to go further south, the yellow area. That yellow area allows us to tie into that bluff better than what we initially thought. That was discovered after we surveyed the property in December. The sanitary sewer is right under where we're going to put all this material, so we need to move that sanitary sewer. That was not known back on October 15th. We went ahead and widened the roadway from 18 feet to 20 to make it a little bit safer, widened the curve as well. We're going to propose to install a wood guard rail, very similar to what we had on the south end, South Beach Access Road, aesthetically pleasing, but safe for drivers, especially during the winter months. And the final is the parking lot reconstruction. That parking lot was constructed in '86 and '87. It's the original parking lot. Our street section has been down there almost annually to do multiple patches, and with the contractor using that as a laydown area, the parking lot, there will not be much of it left. So we are proposing to reconstruct this, include it in part of the project, so the design was included. The numbers that you see this evening do include that parking lot reconstruction that they will do at the end. Bid process. Keno, or excuse me, AECOM began their design on October 16th and completed it on February 4th. We placed the project out to bid on February 5th. We had a mandatory onsite pre-bid meeting with any interested contractors on February 11th, so they could see the site, they could speak with the engineer, they could see the site constraints. And then we had our bid opening on February 19th. We were very pleased that we had seven very competitive bids, John Keno and Company being the lowest bid, very reputable firm, a local firm, owners live in Lake Forest, they've done a good amount of work for us, Lake Forest Cemetery Ravine, North Beach Access Road Ravine, McCormick Ravine. In fact, we have two other ravine projects that they'll be doing for us this spring. Project budget. The initial budget of $1,980,000 was the number that we spoke, we gave you back in October. We increased that by $20,000, even it off to an even $2 million. But that project budget includes $650,000 of donations. We wanted to highlight that this evening, again, thank all the residents that contributed to that. We're very, very happy and pleased and very grateful for that. The North Beach Access Road Ravine project, the ravine project that we just completed, we had an $83,000 contingency that we did not use, so we are proposing to put that towards this project. And then we have two items that you're going to see next week at your budget meeting, some additional capital items. One was the North Beach parking lot itself, and then a request for additional funding to be put towards this project. Your approval this evening will be contingent upon your approval of those two line items at next Monday's budget meeting. As far as the expenses, as we noted, AECOM, their design that was approved on October 15th of $208,000. P. Clifford Miller landscape design, just under $19,000. John Keno, low bid at $2,088,363. And then a 10% contingency. On all construction projects, we typically recommend a 10% contingency for any unforeseen things that may come up. Secondly, this is a unit-based bid. The ravine was a lump sum bid. Here's a number. Pay the number, we do the ravine. We had 76 line items in this bid that all the contractors had to give us costs for. So as an example, if we, if the engineer estimated 23,523 cubic yards of CA6, and we actually used 24,982, we, the city, need to pay the contractor for that delta. We have the number upfront, it's part of the bid, we know exactly what that cost per yard is, but that's what this contingency is for. Anything unforeseen, but additionally, as material, as we receive the material tickets, if they are more than what we estimated, that's what we'll use the contingency for. So your total project at $2,523,000, we'll call it $524,000. The day after the bid opening, Public Works Committee met on the 20th and had a very good discussion on this, that looked at the funding, timeline, et cetera. The Public Works Committee recommendation to the city council was to recommend awarding the bid to John Keno and Company in the amount of $2,088,363. Number two, approve a 10% contingency that would be available to be used by the engineer or the contractor if something, again, comes up, design-wise, that we didn't see or needs to be redesigned. That would be an example of us using the contingency towards that. Number three, approve utilizing the unused contingency dollars that were approved back in July for the ravine project. Ravine project is 99% complete. All the contractor needs to do is bring in black dirt, seed, and blanket. They actually, the contractor, John Keno, was working with the neighbor to the north to install their soldier pile wall that holds up their bluff, so they will do that after they complete that project, they'll bring the dirt and seed and blanket in. And then again, as I noted, contingent upon your approval at next Monday evening's Finance Committee meeting, we're recommending $200,000 for the parking lot, and then an additional $245,000 be put towards this budget. We had internally talked about redoing the parking lot just north of the city hall parking lot, and we pulled that off the list. That is where this funding is essentially coming from. We had proposed adding that to the capital plan. We pulled back, so we'll look at doing that in FY '21. The construction timeline. Construction timelines are not part of the bidding process, but when we have an apparent low bidder, we will ask that contractor to put together a timeline. So we asked Keno Construction to put the timeline together based on all of these milestones. The estimated completion time is mid-September. As I have spoken many a time with our engineer, as he had told us, he said, "This is not that challenging of a project, it's just a very large project." Bringing in 24,000 yards of CA6, semi will have anywhere from 20 to 25 yards. We will have about 1,600 to 1,700 semis bringing in material. That material is compacted every 12 inches. It has to pass various compaction tests before we proceed to the next 12 inches. So there's a lot of work to be done. The contractor knows that we are very eager, A, to start, but B, to complete and get this project completed, get the beach open for our residents to use. So he and I spoke late this afternoon and said, "Gosh, we really need to shoot for Labor Day, if not sooner." And I know that is at the end of the beach season, and Sally is here to talk if you have any questions on how all of that, the beach operation, is going to work. But the contractor knows that we really want to see this thing move along as quickly as we can. Weather-dependent, I think this is a very conservative schedule, and we will be done sooner. The construction route, identical to what we used two years ago for the South Beach Access Road, and essentially, the trucks will be coming down either from the north or coming up from the south on 41. They'll head down Wesley, Wesley then to Sheridan Road to Deer Path. We selected that route primarily so that, again, as I mentioned, 1,600, 1,700 semis, they have to get their timing down. Time is money. They don't want 30 semis sitting there idling. So they will start to begin to run these things every, pick a number, two and a half minutes from the yard. They don't want to sit in Deer Path road traffic. They don't want to sit at railroad crossings. They want to be moving. So we want to keep the truck traffic away from Deer Path Middle School. We want to keep it away from the congestion uptown. We want to keep it away from the high school traffic. So this was very successful for us when we did the South Beach Access Road. We are proposing to do it again for this project. If city council approves it this evening, I have a stack of, I believe, 76 letters ready to go that I'll put in the mailbox tonight, to residents on Sheridan Road, Deer Path, and Lake, letting them know of the project, and obviously, if they have concerns or questions, we'd be happy to talk with them about that. So that is a very quick and brief summary. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Alderman Newman.
During the construction, part of this, is there risk to the slope as it's being built up from heavy weather? Or does it mitigate itself by the fact that you're taking pitch out of the slope?
Very good question. I mean, water is going to continue to come through that sand seam. Is there risk? Sure. Yes, there is risk. There is risk. The sooner we can build that support, the better. But I cannot stand here and tell you that that slope would not move again, but the sooner we can start providing a good base and a foundation against it, the better we are going to be. So the initial phase is actually grinding the stumps on the bluff of the vegetation that we removed, and from there, they start bringing in material. So as soon as the weather breaks, we go.
Mike, can you talk a little bit about, I do think, obviously, reaching out to the 76 residents who are going to be seeing a lot of trucks is very sensible, but these are, I'm less worried about 41, where there's always a lot of traffic. But on Wesley and all of the just Lake Forest roads, it feels like we want the whole public to know that if they use these regularly and they have a choice of some other roads, they might want to do that for a period of time. Will that be in the dialogue, or?
I think it's a good idea for us to put something in the dialogue.
Got to let people know.
We definitely were going to put something on the website, but the next dialogue comes out, I believe, Memorial Day weekend.
Yeah, maybe before then.
And it'll probably be a good idea for us to put something in. When Fort Sheridan did its project with McCormick, there was a similar amount of truck traffic that went down Sheridan Road to Wesley out to 41. We didn't have any problems then, but I think you have a good idea.
Well, I just think, I think the more we let people know ahead of time, and I'm sure that, I know where Sally, I saw Sally, I know she's here, but we're obviously going to need to do some information about the beach earlier than, I mean, last year, we didn't know we were going to have a problem.
Right.
But we do, so, I mean, I'm assuming there'll be some good public information about that. I don't know if you want to talk about that, Sally.
Sally?
Good evening. Yeah, so our plan, we have been working throughout the winter to come up with a plan that's going to be the least painful for the summer, because this is going to be a hard summer. It's going to hurt. We're going to ask for patience, but we will get through it, and then the summer of 2020 is going to be fabulous. But we expect to bring our plan to the Park and Rec Board later this month, to their March meeting, and then based on their suggestions or their approval of the plan, we'll bring it forward to council in April, and then we're going to hit communication very hard beginning in April, so that people are well aware, well in advance of Memorial Day, how this is going to impact them for the summer.
Quick?
Please.
When I look at this number, and I was sort of adding my own numbers together, this $2,523, would it be, you know, and I see that you added in the AE, the engineering and the Cliff Miller, would it be fair to also add into that number, though, the parking lot?
The parking lot is part of the $2,088,000. That is included in Keno's bid. So we called an audible mid-December and asked AECOM to look at, to include a reconstruction of the entire parking lot. So that design was part of the bid.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Any other comments or questions? We've been tackling this subject for a long period of time, and this is a triumph of civil engineering planning, I would say, and we're grateful for it, and very little about trying to correct things that we've done to Mother Nature's world. That there is inexpensive, so it is what it is. When will this actually start? As soon as the weather breaks?
If, based upon city council's approval, if you approve this evening, we have our pre-construction meeting set up for this Thursday, and the contractor will begin to bring in the fencing and start bringing in his materials. So he and I have spoke a few times, and he knows very well, as soon as he can get it, he's going to.
Okay, I get it. All right. That's why the letters are going on. Okay.
I just want to say thank you to all the donors, especially Mrs. Hughes, who made this $660,000 possible. And there were a number of other individuals who had very large contributions in that number. They're not named, but there are a number of those that we sincerely appreciate, so thanks to everybody who contributed.
Yeah. Engaged citizens all, and a wonderful testimony to the quality of Forest Park and what it offers the community on the way to the beach, which is the most used asset or recreational asset we have in the city. And to see that citizen support, I think, as I say, is real substantive testimony, and we can all be very grateful about that.
Yeah, I'd just like to, I'd like to thank Alderman Morris and Beidler for just facilitating that. It's a lot of work, and we really appreciate it as a council and as a community. So thanks for all your efforts to make the phone calls and send the letters and just ask people to participate, so thank you.
Well, indeed. Two champions, for sure.
We, actually, we had additional Aldermanic support, just to be clear. Alderman Prashlak, Alderman Prashlak and Rommel were helpful as well, so.
Okay.
And the mayor did some yeoman work here, so it was a team effort.
It's pretty easy to sell the project, actually, but still, you got to get it done.
Thank you. Mike, we didn't talk a lot in Public Works about the impact on Sheridan Road. It's a curvy road, it's got a lot of overhang, a beautiful canopy. Are you sure that we want to go on Sheridan?
Yes, we are.
Okay. I just, I had to ask.
We had a lot of discussion internally. You know, we essentially have three options. Bring them in 176 through Lake Bluff, past the high school. Second option is bring them in down Deer Path, all the way down to Lake, or third, this other route. And when we, again, look at the timing of this and to try to minimize the liability and the risk, when you think about high school, McKinley in the morning, in the afternoon, when we think about Deer Path in the morning, in the afternoon, we think about Deer Path throughout the day, and again, throughout the summer months, yes, we have the college, and we will be working with the college, and just like the South Beach Access Road, the contractor will be told to make sure all the subcontractors slow down on Sheridan Road. That was a big part of South Beach Access Road. It'll be a big part of this one as well. They have a safety division, all companies do. But Keno, you know, has a very large safety division, and they have people that literally all they do are on this job to make sure that their employees are operating safely and that their subcontractors are operating safely. So you have the college, and we're going to need to deal with the college, and we'll be talking to the college as well. But I really think, from a liability and from a time standpoint, I think Sheridan Road is the best.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I can make one more comment? Please, right.
It's another thank you, I think, should be expressed, recognizing we're not home-free. We still have other challenges that I'm sure the council appreciates, but we've made major steps coming as far as we did, and the thank you needs to be expressed to Mike, his staff, the many people that have been working on it, AECOM, I see they're represented here, because you did a great job putting together the bid, the bid process, bringing in a lot of qualified bidders, seven, getting competitive bids, going through the right process, having a result with a company that we're very comfortable with, a lot of great experience with them, good synergies with them, working to the neighbor of the north. So I think we had a lot of good fortune, but a lot of it is due to the hard work by staff and the assistance he had from AECOM. So thank you.
And if I may, I'd like to echo that. I will not forget 5:45 that evening, getting the call from our park supervisor. And I have our AECOM engineers' phone number memorized and called him, and I was down to Forest Park in about 15 minutes. He was down in Chicago and came up in about two hours with a geotechnical engineer, and they were there until 11:00, 11:30 with flashlights. they were there till eleven, eleven-thirty with flashlights pouring all over the bluff. They were there the following day, and you are absolutely correct, they've been there with us this whole time saying, here are your options. Uh, here's what you can do, here's what you can't. So, a lot of thanks to Bill Weaver and his team at AECom.
Interesting. Any other, uh, comments, questions on the behalf of council? Seeing none, um, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak about this matter? Yes, ma'am. Please. Yes, uh, if you identify yourself and your address. Thank you.
I, I think my address is optional, isn't it, by the law?
Okay.
Okay.
You can be optional.
But, uh, hi, my name is Kimberly Reich. Uh, I'm going to give my address. I reside at twelve-seventy-five Gavin Court with my husband, Joe, and actually, I appreciate the opportunity to address you this evening. I actually represent myself and my neighbors on Gavin Court. My neighbors and I read the agenda for this evening, and we made particular note of the following, and I quote, "John Keno and Company recently repeated, completed repair work at the North Beach Ravine. They were extremely responsive to both the city and inspecting engineers throughout the project. The work was completed in a timely manner, and no change order requests were submitted. Additionally, John Keno and Company is a contractor chosen by the neighbor on the north side of the N-Bar ravine to repair their bluff failure. John Keno and Company has recently repaired the ravine at Lake Forest Cemetery, the McCormick Ravine, and is scheduled to complete repair for the city at both the Water Plant and Lake Woodbine ravines this spring," end of quote. What my neighbors and I did not see noted was any mention of the illegal thirty-foot berm Keno built for Rialto, Rick Swanson, and the Oak Knoll Woodlands subdivision. This giant, and it was massive, berm remained in place for over thir- three years, blocked our drainage, increased our noise and vibrations from the trains, cost us tens of thousands of dollars in damages to our homes at twelve-fifteen, twelve-forty-five, twelve-seventy-five, and thirteen-oh-five Gavin. Significant flooding problems and a mess, I mean, a mess, was caused to the city's stormwater and drainage detention pond shared between twelve-seventy-five and thirteen-oh-five Gavin, and this has never been cleaned up or addressed to this day. The landscape and ecosystem has been permanently altered and changed to this day. The Gavin Court neighbors together and I have asked me, they want to know one question. If Keno is approved, what is to prevent Keno from disregarding city code, the environment, and the neighboring properties yet again? After numerous FOIA requests, I never found any evidence of a single fine or penalty that was ever assessed to Keno, Rialto, or Mr. Swanson. It appears that the city of Lake Forest, and I love the city of Lake Forest, I want to live here in this community, I've tried to work with my community and my aldermen and all of you for over four years now. It appears that there's never been a single dollar in any penalty, fine, or fee ever assessed. It appears that the city of Lake Forest's code enforcement and oversight process failed us terribly. So what assurances will the citizens and taxpayers have that the code enforcement will not fail us another time, like it did terribly in twenty-fifteen? First Baron John Dahlberg Acton once said, "Power tends to corrupt, and absolute power corrupts absolutely. Great men are almost always bad men, even when they exercise influence and not authority. Still more when you superadd the tendency or the certainty of corruption by authority." City council, esteemed leaders, I believe in your leadership and trust that you will work to ensure that the oversight and code enforcement processes are improved, so the unintended consequences and adverse effects that the Gavin Court neighbors continue to suffer from will not be repeated. I also trust that you will take these facts into deliberation before you make a decision. Thank you.
Oh, I have one more question. Kathy, whatever happened to that, tons and tons of dirt at the berm, is it down there at the lake?
Yeah.
What happened with the route, where there was a special route? I always wondered what happened to our berm, all that dirt. Where, where did it go?
We can get back to it, I don't know the answer.
Okay, thank you. I would, we all kind of wondered. We was wondering if, if our burn, if our, the berm dirt ended up at the lake. We kind of laughed about that.
Time, because.
Um, therefore, let's see, may, uh, based on the recommendation of the Public Works Committee and the city staff, may I have a motion, uh, for, number one, approval of the Public Works Committee's recommendation to award a bid for the North Beach Access Road Landslide Restoration Project to John Keno and Company in the amount of two million eighty-eight thousand three-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars and forty cents. And number two, approval of the Public Works Committee's recommendation to approve an engineering and/or construction contingency of ten percent of the low bid for the North Beach Access Road Landslide Restoration Project in the amount of two hundred and eight thousand eight hundred and thirty-six dollars and thirty-four cents.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, this is a roll call vote.
Alderman Biedler?
Aye.
Alderman Mortis?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Rommel?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Prashlak?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
All right.
Eight yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Uh, thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda is consideration of a recommendation from the Public Works Committee in support of an ordinance amending section one-thirty-five point one-zero-eight C titled Noise Generally of the City Code. This is the first reading of the ordinance, um, to be presented by Alderman Ray Bushman, Chairman of the Public Works Committee, and by Chuck Meyer, Superintendent of Parks and Forestry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll ask, uh, Mr. Myers, to give us a little background information, reminding everyone of, uh, the subject of, uh, noise and the ordinance that we're proposing here.
Good evening, Mayor Lansing and members of the council. Uh, early last year, Mayor Lansing asked, uh, city staff to review the current regulations pertaining to the use of leaf blowers, uh, and the goal was to mitigate the noise impacts. Uh, staff prepared options for the Public Works Committee, uh, who was looking into this and reviewing these options. Uh, the options included code revisions, uh, to the hours of operation, uh, also regulations of decibel levels allowed, uh, and then they also looked at partial year bans, uh, and then educational or training incentives, and then finally, taking no action at all. Uh, so in April, Public Works Committee, uh, made recommendations to amend the hours of operation, uh, for leaf blowers, and then in May, city council granted the first reading on those recommendations. Uh, in June, city council, uh, deferred final action, uh, and remanded it back to the Public Works Committee, uh, for further study. Uh, the Public Works Committee directed staff to perform a survey of, uh, registered landscape companies in Lake Forest, uh, to get their input on, uh, what these proposed changes would mean to them. Uh, in September, the Public Works Committee reviewed the survey results, uh, and had further discussion. The survey, in summary, uh, revealed that the majority of landscape companies, uh, would be opposed to a, a ban. Uh, and by the way, uh, it went out to three hundred companies that were registered in Lake Forest, and we received seventy-three, uh, answer, or, uh, responses to that. Uh, so the other thing that it revealed was that the majority, uh, were not opposed to changes on the end times. Uh, that seemed to be more favorable to them. When we asked the same kind of questions about changing the start time, the majority were opposed to that. Um, so, it, it also revealed that the four o'clock end time was not favorable to them, but five o'clock was. The majority were okay with that. So we kind of honed in on those times. And then the Public Works Committee discussed that, uh, and a number of other options that we had already talked about. Um, so at that time, the Public Works Committee agreed on a new recommendation that is here before you tonight. And basically, the code, uh, remains substantially the same, uh, with the exception of some time changes for the end. So on the left, you can see, that's the current times. Uh, on the, on the right, I have the, uh, recommend, recommended new times. Monday through Friday remains the same, no changes at all. Saturday, the start time is the same as it is now, and the end time is five-thirty, so it's reduced by a couple hours. And then on Sunday and holidays, uh, the start time stays the same at ten, the end time would be five o'clock. With that, I'll give it back to Alderman Bushman.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. Um, I'd just like to try and summarize, uh, where the Public Works Committee, you know, ended up, uh, on this, uh, issue, an issue that, uh, I think we all recognize, there are a lot of diverse viewpoints and opinions as to what should or should not be done. Uh, and we did try and get as much input as we could. We did try and balance the needs and desires that we've heard from our constituents and from the landscapers, the homeowners, the neighbors, uh, and try and balance all this, but also was important that we have an ordinance that was workable, would be enforceable, would be understandable. If you start getting into too many details about devil, uh, decibel levels, different types of equipment, it becomes very cumbersome, could be confusing, and creates difficulties for enforcement. So we felt, uh, in looking at, uh, you know, the past experiences here, where, uh, the type and number of complaints, which haven't been that many in the area, uh, and again, trying to, uh, have as much input as we can in balancing the different issues and concerns, uh, we ended up, uh, adjusting, proposing to adjust the weekend hours, which basically says, we hope to accomplish another four and a half hours of peaceful and quiet enjoyment in the neighborhoods on the weekend by, uh, putting an earlier time, and, uh, we hope that makes sense, and, uh, will accommodate, as I said, uh, the various interests that we have involved here.
Thank you. Well, obviously, it's a, an old subject, goes back many years, and there's been considerable number of meetings, either a council or Public Works, I counted on a list here, at least seven times. Council's discussed it in thirteen months. And there are many, sort of, contending, uh, issues, uh, involved. Are there any questions, thoughts? Again, we've studied this and looked at it for a long period of time. Seeing no more comments from council, is there someone in the audience who'd like to speak to this? I think, uh, Amy Schutz left us a note. She'd like to speak.
Hi, my name is Amy Schutz, and I've lived here most of my life, and I'm really, I'm really upset about this whole thing. I think you have missed the whole, um, complaint that's going on here. It's a noise issue, and why are we the only community on the north shore that does not realize this? And we're loud, we're, we're surveying the landscapers? I mean, they are not paying the taxes here. I've lived here most of my life, I love living here, but I love it because it's quiet. It's not the city of Chicago. We have birds, we have animals, we have all kinds of stuff, but I can't sit in my house and talk to a person with, with, when my neighbors, landscapers, are running those machines. And every one of my neighbors, I live really close to town, I live on Rosemary, beautiful street, I cannot, um, even go out in my yard and talk with a person because they are so loud. And I would invite all of you to come over to my house any day, and you can hear this. And just to decide that we're going to give them a half an hour, this is really upsetting to me, and I'm trying to stay, not getting upset, but I think you guys have missed it, and you need to survey the citizens, not the landscapers. That's like asking the wolves, is it okay if we put a chick, new chicken wire on the chicken house? You know, it's, to me, it sounds ridiculous, so, those are my thoughts, and I feel like this is a problem for years, and I, I don't know why you, you don't feel this is a problem, but I think in the summer, when we have time to be sitting outside and enjoying the beautiful city, why we have to put up with these noise issues. And I think, if you look at the other suburbs nearby, they've totally banned them for the whole summer. Maybe that would be the easy thing to do, if we don't want to get cumbersome about DB, you know, decibels and that thing. So I think you really need to think about this again.
Well.
And not just pass this today.
Yeah, well, thank you. We, it's one of the, probably the longest-running subject in the modern era of the city, and, um, we have spent a lot of time talking to citizens, just, if I may.
Okay, I've never, this is the first time I've ever even heard that you were even discussing it, because I saw an article in the paper.
These are all public meetings with agendas that have gone on for a very long period of time, okay? And, and we're well aware, the city staff, I, I'm, I'm just making some comments, not to get into a discussion, frankly, but it's, it's, it's something city staff's well aware of. Uh, we, we hear about it, and, and every member of this council is subject to noise, okay? We, we have the same noise issue, so.
Right, well, why don't you think it's a problem, then?
And, um, and we have surveyed, uh, other communities, and it ranges from outright bans to every manner and degree of regulation. So it's not uniform. Um, and, uh, there are an awful lot of citizens that like to have their landscaping taken care of.
No, I'm not saying that, that we should stop that, but they can use other things. There is electric things, electric blowers that are much quieter, they have battery packs that last for hours, they're not just a twenty-minute thing. There are other things you can do, and I know, one of the recommendations was talking to your neighbors, but if your neighbors are all working, and a new crew shows up every week, and they're running their, and they use them as brooms and rakes and every other device all summer long, that's really annoying.
All, all that was considered. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Yep. Uh, it was considered a great length. Someone else? Yes, please.
My name is Yu Shabaka Kobel, eleven-fourteen-eleven Lake Road, and I'm, I hate speaking, so, sorry.
Don't worry.
Um, thank you for bringing this up, and thank you, Alderman Rommel, for really pushing the course here. I have been living in Lake Forest for the past seven years. When I moved here, we were attracted to the beautiful landscaping, the tranquility of the city, and the good schools. I work from home with most of my business relationships coming from Europe. That means that it is very important for me to be able to hold video conferences, telephone conferences, and meetings at my home. Since moving here, the increase in noise and disturbance of tranquility have been stark. I've noticed more leaf blowers, more landscaping machines on more days of the week and more hours of the day. Exposure to noise is measured in units of sound pressure called decibel. It is often referred to as DBA. WHO recommends outdoor noise not to exceed more than fifty-five DBA, and indoor noise between thirty and forty-five, before it becomes, can become a health hazard to our general health, cardiovascular health, metabolism, levels, stress levels, and hearing. Gasoline-powered leaf blowers exceed, according to the man, the manufacturer manuals, fifty-five DBA. Last summer, I frequently measured, measured DBA inside my house to be well over a hundred with my windows and doors closed. When my neighbors' landscapers are working, this can take place for two to three hours in a row. And imagine when your neighbors each have landscapers coming several times a week on diff, at different days and different hours. The high readings are a result of several landscaping machines working concurrently on the same plot, and imagine trying to sit outside, it's just not possible anymore to enjoy our city. Noise is not the only problem with gasoline-powered two-cylinder, two-cycle engines. They're also a huge contributor to air pollution, which is why many of us have experienced when we pass a landscaping crew, that we start coughing and we're not feeling well. EPA also recommends that we need to reduce the noise levels, and with, when we do that, we can increase our overall health in our communities. I've read your proposal, and I'm very disappointed that you've taken input from landscaping businesses instead of residents. Most of the landscaping businesses do not live here in town, and they do not pay taxes here. The proposal is insufficient and does not take residents' needs, rights, or health in, enough into consideration. In the committee minutes, the committee members, one committee member stated that there's no problem because the police are not called. Well, most residents do not feel that we should call the police on Well, most residents do not feel that we should call the police on these kind of matters. The minute also reflected, Elderwoman Rummel proposed for residents' input. Thank you for that. Unfortunately, she was voted down, and I would like to remind those members who voted her down that you are supposed to represent the residents, not the businesses coming from outside. Shame. The problem with noise pollution is a real one, and in order not to destroy our beautiful, tranquil town, I plead that you follow the example of all the other North Shore communities with stricter ordinances in the use of polluting and noise-seeing machines. I plead that you implement seasonal restrictions from May 15th to October 1st and at all days of the week. Additionally, you need to place limits on the maximum decibel levels and on the number of noise-emitting landscaping machines that can be working concurrently on the same plot. This is just not acceptable that you're not listening to the residents. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Seeing none, I'll bring this matter, which has been discussed at great length for many months, back to council and ask for a motion to grant first reading of an ordinance amending Section 135.108(c) of the City Code consistent with the recommendation of the Public Works This is a motion. So those all in favor?
I need a motion, sorry.
You need a motion.
Is there a motion?
Let's do a roll call vote.
And motion.
Motion and a roll.
Is it? It doesn't?
It's amending an ordinance.
It should be, it's an ordinance.
Can I ask a point of clarification about? So this is something that we are voting on now, doesn't preclude it being modified additionally. So we're cutting back four and a half hours, but we could come up, we could look at this, I'm guessing we wouldn't do it sooner than a year, but I'm just saying, if it turns out we'd like to modify it further, is there any reason we couldn't do that? So there's no time restriction?
Yeah.
So we're going in a certain direction, we'll see what happens next, okay? I just wanted to be clear.
Evolutionary.
As we've done, it's been an evolutionary, over the years, this thing's been-
Oh, we've been doing this for a while, you're right.
And yeah, no council can bind a future council with regard to such a thing. So now, is this a roll call vote?
Yes.
Okay, that's a different, all right. May I have a motion on this?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Can we have further discussion? Can we have further discussion now that the motion has been seconded?
No.
If you'd like, well, we, the artists did.
You know, I think that this, I think that there's some new information, frankly, that some of these residents have brought forward that perhaps we should consider. I would not be opposed to sending this back to committee for another look at it. I think that this is some progress, but I remain a fan of electrical-powered leaf blowers. I think their decibel level is lower, and I think there's less air pollution. And I know when we considered this at the Public Works Committee, we thought that we might sort of throw this open to more discussion and possible reconsideration of even this proposal once it got to the council. So, you know, I'm not sure that we, as a committee, totally embraced this recommendation as the end-all, be-all, and that there were other considerations to take into account, but frankly, we had done what we could with it at the committee level and, you know, really wanted some further discussion, hopefully, out of the council on the matter. So those are my comments on it.
Well, I mean, I just doesn't, I mean, this is directionally correct, I mean, to Alderman Beidler's point, I don't want perfect to be the enemy of good. I mean, I'm totally in favor of the committee, and I'm not on the committee, but to continue to get benchmark data on other communities and to continue to work the problem and the issues and get the key stakeholders' feedback, but, you know, to not reduce it by four and a half hours tonight seems kind of negligent to me. I mean, and I don't think that's going to preclude anything, and I totally feel confident that the committee's going to do the work required to make sure the best solution emerges in our community over time, and, you know, you can get the facts and understand the trade-offs and who's impacted and who's not. We've heard this, I've only been on since May, but there's been people that have come in to say that I'm a do-it-yourselfer, and I can't economically pay for people to do this, and so I need to do it myself, and I have this equipment, and I'd like to do it, so I don't want any bans. And there's huge enforcement issues around gas versus electric, so you have to take a holistic view of this, not be reactionary to one stakeholder communicating an issue at the 11th hour. So I'm in 100% agreement about moving forward on this and then studying it thoughtfully and bringing a solution that continues to solve the problem over time.
Don't we have a motion that's been seconded that's on the table?
Yes.
That requires a vote?
So now we can have discussion once the motion is seconded.
Is that the way Roberts Rules normally handles this thing?
Yes.
Okay, well, then I'll make a point. I've been on council for six years.
And you're tired, we get it.
I am tired. I am tired. I have heard not one complaint about leaf blowers or this type of, or any kind of lawn maintenance equipment, quite frankly. I'm also the president of a homeowner's association, so I do get a lot of input, all the time. Not one complaint in the time that I've been doing this, which is way, 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 way too long, quite frankly. And I just, you know, it comes back, it comes back in front of us, we say the same things, we move forward, and it comes back again. Like, let's move forward with this thing. If you guys want to bring it back when I'm off council in several months, go ahead, but for goodness sakes, let's get this behind us. As Prue said, you want to revisit it, fine, it's always on the table.
Actually, I'm going to nominate you to a Blue Ribbon Committee of Citizens.
Put me on a project, I'll come back occasionally and help you out with this.
I guess I don't understand why, if this wasn't ready, why it came to us at this point? If the committee was undecided on this, why is it in front of us?
I would like to add some clarifying comments, if I may. This is an evolutionary process. We do know that there is a greater trend toward electric blowers. We also know that there's an invested infrastructure in gas-powered blowers that people want to use. So this is not the solution for everyone, it is a solution for the moment, and to Prue Beidler's point and Melanie's point, this is something that we will continue to address. It's not done. It probably will never be done. But I do think it's extremely important for residents to talk to each other. I mean, if you want to sit outside and you have a meeting at 10:00 on a Tuesday morning, talk to your neighbor, just talk to them. If your neighbor's landscaper is using gas-powered blowers and you don't want them to use them, encourage them to have their landscaper switch to electric, or tell your landscaper to switch to electric. You can make those steps, you don't need legislation to guide every step of your way. So, you know, let's do it together. If this is a step, it is not the solution for all times, it's the solution for today. So that's the way I feel about it. I think that the Public Works, and certainly Mr. Myers, has done yeoman's work on this, trying everything. He didn't exclusively survey landscapers, but that was a big part of what we talked about at the committee level. So I realize not everyone's going to be happy all the time with everything that we do. This is a step in the right direction, and I hope that we consider it that.
There just isn't a perfect answer for this kind of issue, so we have to address this incrementally along the way. Short of an outright ban, I would say that if we did do an outright ban, everybody's bill would go up 40%, and that would create a lot of issues for homeowners right there. So, I mean, there's just not a perfect answer.
Well, I think also, technology is moving forward. I don't think that electric blowers at this point, that I've heard testimony that the decibel level for electric blowers is not that different from these gas-powered blowers, but that doesn't address the pollution problems, and they do cause a good deal of pollution, which I think is a factor. I understand they also don't operate very long without needing to be recharged. So I think the important point here is, yes, we have reduced the operating hours somewhat, but I still think there are residents who are quite troubled by it, and I think those of us who live on smaller lots and are closer together are probably more troubled by it than some of us who live on larger lots. And so I think that's why Ward 2 is getting more complaints than some of our aldermen who are out west on larger lots. So I can vote for these changes tonight, but I do encourage us to keep looking at this topic because it keeps coming back, which means nobody's happy yet about it.
Yeah, to me, I'd be really interested in other communities, so, I mean, this is like a subcommittee meeting here, right, when we're at the council? But, you know, I would like data around what others have done and what have been the unintended consequences and how it's working. It's really simple, right? So we don't need to reinvent the wheel, we need to go talk to the communities, we need to figure it out, talk to their representatives and their homeowners and say, what has happened to the business community? What has happened to the neighbors? Tell us what's happened, and what was your policy? We can learn off of them and then bring that learnings back here and make changes at the subcommittee level, and then you raise it up to us and we approve it. So I would really encourage that.
Yeah, we certainly did look at other communities, and the comment made earlier was right on, they do very radically, some do have bans during a certain time of the year, others have no bans, no issues there. And there's, again, it is a complex issue. Chuck Myers shared with me the other day an article out there on the use of blowers and how efficient they are and how they help the community beautify themselves. Now, that's the article, I don't think we want to argue that issue, but there are different perspectives on this thing. It's a very complicated issue and goes back to what I initially said, there's many diverse viewpoints and, you know, good arguments there, but we've got to try and balance it, we've got to try and move forward, and again, not to say, you know, in the future, you know, to your successor, Jack, be happy to look at it again, but right now, I think with the season coming up shortly, we should get something out there if we're going to make a change, and this is what we're proposing.
But I think we also should make the statement that we would like to see a trend toward using electric blowers as those become more fee, I'm not putting that into the ordinance.
Yeah, but see, now you're opening up the issue, you know, I have a neighbor that has the landscaper that uses a stand-up mower, and they're as loud as the blowers and the trimmers, the gas-powered trimmers. You start, you know, if you're going to just select one thing, how about others that are at the same decibel level? And within the area of that category, they can vary significantly. Is it new? Is it old? Does it have a good muffler on it? Does it not? You know, that becomes enforcement, and I don't think our police department wants to go around with a decimeter checking every home, whether it's above 90 decibels or not, 30 feet away from where they're using it. And I don't think we want to do that.
Yeah, all very good points, particularly a work in progress. So we have a motion and a second, and I would now like to ask for a roll call vote.
Alderman Beidler.
Aye.
Alderman Morris.
Aye.
Alderman Newman.
Aye.
Alderman Rummel.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack.
Aye.
Alderman Moreno.
Aye.
Alderman Bushman.
Aye.
Eight yay, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item in business is opportunity for citizens to address council on non-agenda items. Is there anyone who would like to speak about a non-agenda item? Seeing none. Next, there are items for omnibus vote consideration. We have seven items. Approval of the February 19th, 2019 City Council Meeting Minutes. Approval of the check register for the period of January 26th to February 22nd, 2019. Third, approval of a Parks and Recreation Board recommendation to approve annual tree purchasing in the forestry budget for fiscal year 2020. Fourth, approval of a Parks and Recreation Board recommendation to authorize a city manager to enter into a contract with Mariani Landscape for Grounds Maintenance Services at Forest Park in the fiscal 2020 Parks and Rec budget. Number five, approval of a Parks and Rec Board recommendation to authorize a city manager to enter into a contract with Landscape Concepts Management for annual grounds maintenance services in the 2020 Parks and Rec budget. Number six, approval of council to, number one, transfer the proceeds from the sale of the Deer Path Golf Course golf cart fleet, say that fast, the Deer Path Golf Course golf cart fleet, in the amount not to exceed $51,300 to the Friends of Lake Forest Parks and Recreation Foundation, and two, accept the anticipated donation by the Friends of Lake Forest Parks and Recreation Foundation of a new cart fleet. Seven, award of the Lake Forest share of the joint 2019 annual street resurfacing and asphalt patching program to Schroeder Asphalt Services in the amount of $1,088,000, subject to finance committee review on March 11th, 2019. As we do, any one of these items could be removed for separate consideration, but short of that, any comments or questions?
I would like to make a comment, and it follows on the discussion that we just had. I noted myself with pleasure that in item number four, Mariani Landscape will continue to offer the program started last year, that, this is on the mowing at Forest Park, that encompasses a number of sustainability practices. First and foremost will be the deployment of fully-electric mowers, blowers, and line trimmers in all service operations at Forest Park, and it goes on in some detail about the benefits of this. So I think it's great that we're actually having one of our premier landscapers doing this at Forest Park. We can go in with our decimeters that are on our phones, right Jed? Don't we all have those attachments now? Hey, your suggestion. But it feels like we'll have a model right there if anybody is interested in how this works, and I think it sounded to me like we would like to revisit this again in the near future, and this is a perfect example of someplace we can go and see it at work. And so I'm all for, I'm all for an a, an aye on this one.
Exactly, it's a wonderful demonstration.
That'll be a great demonstration project, right there at our beloved Forest Park.
I agree, and I hope he uses that perhaps on some other projects in the city, Mariani, and so we don't have to all go to Forest Park to witness it.
Forest Park's a small place to go.
Oh, I know it is.
Thank you. I am sorry to be a broken record, but I'm having trouble with miscellaneous, sorry, all other funds in the check register. You've defined approximately a third of it, but it just, it's a big number, and I question.
That's all right. So what we've begun to do is include that notation under the table. So in this particular month, that all other included an $829,000 payment to the Intergovernmental Risk Management Agency, which is the city's annual member contribution, and that covers the liability and workers' compensation insurance for the city. And then there was a $484,000 payment to Joseph J. Henderson and Son Incorporated, which is part of the water treatment plant improvements. So we have tried to note when those all other fund categories are uniquely high to offer a little bit more insight on what those totals represent, so.
Thank you, I failed to add those two together.
No problem.
They are listening, Michelle.
Yep.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Oh, we need a motion, I'm forgetting.
So moved, to approve the omnibus.
So moved. I'll move it.
Yeah, may I have a motion to approve the omnibus vote?
Second.
Second.
Alderman Beidler.
Aye.
Alderman Morris.
Aye.
Alderman Newman.
Aye.
Alderman Rummel.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg is absent. Alderman Preschlack?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
He's out of the room. Eight, it would be a seven yay. Motion carries.
Biologically indisposed. Okay. Next item is ordinances, and Kathy's already. One item, which is consideration of a recommendation from the Zoning Board of Appeals in support of amendments to the special use permit for Eloa Farm, including modifications to the Elloa Farm is located at fourteen oh one Middle Fork Drive in the Middle Fork Farm subdivision. If desired by council and deemed appropriate, this council can waive first reading and grant final approval of the ordinance as presented, to be presented by Catherine Zerniak, Director of Community Development. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This recommendation, as the mayor noted, comes to you from the Zoning Board of Appeals. It is a recommendation in support of an ordinance approving amendments to the special use permit for Elloa Farm. I have about fourteen slides that I'd like to go through, a little bit more than normal, but I think this deserves a little bit of time. I'd like to cover process and speak to the vision for Elloa Farm, talk about the use areas as now recommended by the Zoning Board of Appeals, the conditions and limitations on use as they are proposed for amendment. I'd like to cover some of the key discussion points, some of the challenges, some of the areas of conflict, and then review the recommendation and what's before the council for action, and then even next steps before, next steps beyond council action tonight. But before I talk about process, I did want to just take a moment and, as the title notes, really just take a moment to talk about Elloa Farm as really an extraordinary community resource. The council, the boards and commissions, the community always gets into such detailed discussion, and we tend to focus on where the challenges are, where the problems are. And so I just wanted to take a moment and remember what could have been and what an amazing partnership really gave us, with the theme that continuing to work with our partners, we can resolve challenges as this community has always done. This is an early plan for Middle Fork Farm subdivision, a plan that probably came to the city in nineteen ninety-seven. And just to orient you, this is Waukegan Road. This is generally where Middle Fork Farm Drive is, and as you see, the proposal that came before the city completely built out that two-hundred-acre site. I believe there's about maybe sixteen or eighteen lots in the area that is today preserved as an oak savanna. I would submit that not a single of those oak trees would remain if, in fact, that subdivision occurred. This is an area up in the northwest corner that is under the stewardship of open lands as well as the oak savanna, and this is significant wetland, a glacial pond, I believe. Generally, in this area is Elloa Farm, the farm, the historic farm complex buildings that, again, wouldn't be there if the partnership hadn't come together. Instead of this, what we have today on this two-hundred-acre site is an extraordinary community resource. And I recall former alderman Tim Reynolds, when Middle Fork Farm was being approved, talking about this as the second lakefront, the west side of Lake Forest lakefront. We have the preserved oak savanna, which is under the stewardship of open lands, where there were about eighteen homes proposed. We have the northwest quadrant, which is a wetland area and a pond, also under open land stewardship. The west side is now under the ownership of the Lake County Forest Preserves District. The city has a sixteen-acre site, a portion of that, which is Elloa Park, under the Parks, Recreation and Forestry Department. We have Elloa Farm, and we have a seventy-two-lot subdivision, some smaller clustered lots with a plaisance, an open space that extends through it, and thirteen larger lots, acre and a half, that border the open lands along the south. If it hadn't been for that partnership, we wouldn't be here tonight talking about some of the challenges that we faced. So I just wanted to lay that groundwork. Process. Again, looking back, in nineteen ninety-eight, the city council approved the Middle Fork Farm subdivision. And only after the property owner, the Carroll family, Lake Forest Open Lands, the Forest Preserves District, City of Lake Forest, the developer, if I didn't say that, all came together, and after months and months of meetings and debate and discussion and disagreement, the Middle Fork Farm subdivision was approved. In two thousand and ten, after many meetings, the plan commission, then under the direction of Alderman Reisenberg as chairman, recommended and the city council then approved the first special use permit for Elloa Farm. After that special use permit was approved, and since two thousand and ten, the uses and the awareness of Elloa Farm have really increased. And again, that's why we're here today, because in two thousand and ten, there really wasn't an understanding of what Elloa Farm could be. And it has evolved. It's become a very well-used and beloved resource in our community, as has the open lands property and the forest preserve property out in that area. More recently, in two thousand and seventeen, after quite a bit of discussion, an update the city initiated, an update to the master plan and the special use permit, the conditions of that special use permit. Beginning in late two thousand and seventeen, continuing on almost to the end of two thousand and eighteen, over the course of seven meetings, the Zoning Board of Appeals considered amendments to the master plan and special use permit. They studied the existing documents, they walked the site, they heard public testimony again and again and again through many meetings, they considered many drafts, many different configurations of the different conditions, and ultimately, they forwarded a recommendation to the city council. The zoning board acknowledged that what they're sending you isn't perfect and that there is no single right answer, and that the special use permit and the master plan need to be living documents. And although this amendment has been a very in-depth overall amendment, it doesn't mean that in three months, or six months, or three years, or seven years, that we can't come in and tweak the fourth sentence on page fifty-seven and do that very quickly through the zoning board and the city council if a number needs to be higher or lower, or an area needs to be changed. So the zoning board is forwarding this to you really as their best effort at this time, doing the best they could to balance various interests, and feeling that it was important to get something in place. We're moving into spring, even though the temperature might not feel like it, but the zoning board recognized that March and April really sees an increase in activity, and they felt that all parties, the Elloa Farm Foundation, the Wildlife Discovery Center, the residents, the users of Elloa, needed to have some certainty with respect to parameters and conditions. So that's why they moved this forward at this time and feel that it's a strong document, both the special use permit and master plan, and really will set a framework to allow the use to continue and next steps to occur. Looking ahead, next steps. We do know that the operating agreement, those discussions need to continue, and they can continue best with the framework of an updated master plan and special use permit. Those would continue under the direction of the city manager with input from the input and direction from the Property and Public Lands Committee, and then that would lead to discussion of budget issues. And the zoning board recognized that some of the conditions have budgetary impacts, but felt that, or understood, that their purview is not the financial aspects of Elloa that really needed to be addressed through the operating agreement, which can only occur if the parameters are in place. Just to revisit the vision, the zoning board talked about the vision as it was originally envisioned, and just to read it quickly here. The vision was, and still is, that Elloa Farm should be open to the public, a place for community members to experience, study and explore an historic gentleman's farm and garden, and an accredited nature center, the Wildlife Discovery Center, in the context of unique surroundings in an established, within an established, single-family neighborhood, surrounded by preserved open lands in the Middle Fork Savanna, which is a sensitive and significant natural area. The vision recognizes that Elloa Farm is primarily intended for passive educational and recreational experiences. The Zoning Board of Appeals recommended really some clarifications and some greater specificity with respect to the use areas. Six use areas are recommended, two of those use, or three of those, two of those use areas and a portion of the third are further defined by an overlay district. The six use areas, the entrance corridor, which is intended to remain free of structures and really provide for broad views from the residential homes across Elloa Farm and into the open space, as well as views from those entering along Middle Fork Drive, the garden area, which is this entire area, the historic farm building complex. The farm buildings on the site are designated as a local landmark, and as such, they are under the purview of the Historic Preservation Commission. This red area is the primary rental event area. It's an area where tents are erected, where evening weddings are held. The green area is identified as a natural education area, and this purple area is identified as a common area. It's a, the original parking lot was recently expanded, eighty parking lot, eighty parking spaces. The parking lot and the trails are shared by the, by Elloa Park, by the Forest Preserve District, by user of open lands, as well as by employees and visitors to Elloa Farm. The two overlay districts are really intended to provide additional opportunities within those areas. The southern portion of the garden, the area furthest away from the neighboring residential homes, is identified by this hatched area, and I'll speak to farm animals and garden sheds that are permitted in that area a bit later on. And this area here is identified as the Wildlife Discovery Center overlay district. The zoning board recognized that currently the Wildlife Discovery Center area is located very close to where some of the rental activities or rental events occur, and they elongated it really with the thought that over time, perhaps some of the exhibits could be pulled away from the more active areas, buffers could be provided, and there could be an improved setting, better distance and better separation. Based on the recommendation of an ad hoc committee that was chaired by former alderman George Pandalian, the zoning board also identified the opportunity, not a mandate, but the opportunity for a future low-profile structure in this area, if, in fact, the council ever choose to move, chose to move in that direction and if funding was available. The zoning board also, as part of their work on the master plan and defining use areas, identified locations for events with, again, the area on the western portion of the site, furthest from the homes, as being the primary area identified for private rental events. The paddock, which is enclosed on three sides by the farm buildings, is also identified for smaller events. Secondary events, secondary event area is between the complexes of the building in the main courtyard, and then to respond to some requests from the Elloa Foundation, the board also identified the area east of the hay barn as a limited event area and provided some specific limitations, balancing concerns of the neighbors from having events creep out further east in the garden, but also trying to allow some flexibility. On the next three slides, I've tried to hit the highlights of the conditions. The conditions, as recommended, really tried to better define the uses. Daily use activity is recognized as activity that is necessary to support both of the tenants, the current tenants, Elloa Farm Foundation and the Wildlife Discovery Center, recognizing that there's various activities that happen, classes, programs, field trips, lectures, and public drop-in, that, again, going back to the vision, that Elloa Farm was intended as a community facility, and that those daily uses primarily occurred dawn to dusk, with some opportunity to have classes till nine or nine-thirty. The conditions recognize that the parking is shared among those various partners that I mentioned earlier, and that the parking to meet the needs of Elloa employees and Elloa visitors or those attending activities is intended to be on-site and not to be spread throughout the neighborhood. In addition to daily activities, the conditions define events and recognize that there are two types of events, events that are held by the tenants, again, the Wildlife Discovery Center and the Elloa Farm Foundation, and events that are held by private individuals, private rentals, again, weddings, retirement parties, or some type of event that you just can't walk into. Tenant-sponsored events are open to the public or available to the public if you purchase tickets. Both types of events are intended to generate revenues to support the Elloa Farm facilities. The zoning board, really as well as all parties who attended that meeting, agreed that daytime events, as opposed to nighttime events, were preferred. And it's just a question of how to really generate more interest in Elloa Farm in those types of events, daytime events, and to really configure the space in a way that really supports encouraging those types of events. As recommended, eighteen evening events of any type are permitted in the recommended conditions. Six of those can have amplified sound. Eleven P.M. ending time is recommended by the zoning board for Friday and Saturday evenings. They had much discussion of this originally in some earlier drafts. They moved to a ten-thirty ending time, but then recognizing that they were reducing significantly the number of evening events, they felt that eleven P.M. ending time was appropriate, ten o'clock ending time during the week. Alcohol service, they're recommending, would stop about thirty minutes prior to the end of an event. Shuttle service is required for events that have more than seventy-five people, and the conditions limit, place some limitations around how that shuttle service occurs, that it must end no later than forty-five minutes after an event ends, or no later than eleven forty-five. It speaks to where shuttles should pick up, and it speaks to eliminating flash and strobe lights on the top of shuttle buses. Consistent with the current conditions, no valet parking is permitted, simply because of the number of trips that generates back and forth. Tent locations are specified, as we talked about, and the conditions also require that a logistics plan for each event, or perhaps a suggested logistics plan for overall events, so that we know if their caterers, where are they unloading, where are they staging their vehicles, what time can they come, what time do they leave, but just the overall concept of how will things happen before and after an event. The conditions recommend that a coordinator be appointed. The city used to play that role, and we are recommending that the city return to playing that role. The coordinator, not for Elloa Farm itself, but really recognizing that cumulatively the activities in this area, because, which all stem from the original partnership, really necessitate some oversight. So we're suggesting that that coordinator would be appointed by the city manager and would be responsible for bringing those groups together, having discussions and assuring that we don't have an activity that goes until eleven P.M. on Saturday night and something else that starts at six A.M. on Sunday morning. else that starts at six AM on Sunday morning. That has happened in the past. The coordinator would also, and importantly, be responsible for providing the city manager with an annual report that really compiles the data on what activities have occurred in the overall area. How many people attended those? How was parking handled? Were there issues? Were there complaints? Were there violations of the special use permit if those events occurred at Elawa Farm? The conditions provide opportunities for new structures. As I mentioned, sheds in the garden overlay area. Elawa, the Elawa Farm Foundation identified that sheds may be helpful. As I mentioned, the low-profile structure that potentially could be built on the west side. And any new substantial structure would require review by the Historic Preservation Commission, given the designation of that area as a local landmark. Finally, the garden market seems to be a, an activity that has worked well. So, the zoning board has recommended some additional flexibility with respect to the garden market. Key areas where there was disagreement, and the zoning board did their best to balance the issues. The subject of farm animals was discussed at length. Some of the neighbors in the Middle Fork Farm subdivision oppose any farm animals on the site. The Elawa Farm Foundation sees this as an opportunity to bring in a passive educational activity to the site. The zoning board felt that, given the history as a gentleman's farm, that some latitude in this area was appropriate. So, the conditions do allow demonstrations or petting zoo-type activity five days on an annual basis. They allow an egg-to-chicken incubator-type activity to occur within the building. And Elawa Farm Foundation requested the opportunity to try and have chickens on the site. So, the zoning board suggested that, that be permitted as a pilot program for, for one year and, and just evaluate it and come back with either a decision to continue it or discontinue it. So, farm animals was a balancing act. Amplified events, private rental events seem to be the area of most concern. And in fact, in, in 2010, when the plan commission initially talked about Elawa Farm, there was discussion then that Elawa Farm should not become a banquet venue, as our, as I recall, the term was used then. So, that continues to be a bit of a delicate balance. Private rental activities are necessary to generate revenue to support Elawa Farm facilities, but they are also something that have been disruptive on occasion to neighboring property owners. Currently, twelve amplified events are permitted on the site. However, amplified is not defined in the current special use permit, which has caused disagreement. It has caused confusion. So, the number of events at which sound has been amplified through some means has, has significantly exceeded the twelve events. So, the zoning board acknowledged that maybe in this area, they've tightened things up too much. They defined amplified events as any music or, or speaking that is amplified by any electronic means. They reduced the number of amplified events from twelve to six and set an end time of eleven PM. So, that is a clear reduction, and that certainly is a clear, a potential impact on the revenues that can be generated by the Elawa Farm Foundation. Certainly, moving forward, further discussion about the definition of a, of an amplified event. We were recent, city staff was recently on site with both representatives of the Elawa Farm Foundation and the Middle Fork Farm Homeowners Association. And, and perhaps events that are held within the hay barn where the amplification occurs through the sound system that is onsite, perhaps there could be more flexibility. But the zoning board felt that because of the, the history of, of some issues with amplified events, that to start with, we really needed to scale that back. The use of the cottage was a point of discussion. The zoning board specifically directed that the cottage be identified as part of the farm building complex. So, that is reflected on the master plan. It is also currently used by the, by the manager of the Wildlife Discovery Center. So, it was also included in the overlay for the Wildlife Discovery Center. So, that's one of those pieces that is certainly recognized as part of the historic complex, but the use is also separately recognized. The zoning board heard clearly and, and frequently from the neighbors about the concern about cumulative activity in the area. And again, that, that goes to the, the fact that, that there are different partners in the area, and we do need to improve communication and coordination in that area. The neighbors expressed concern that if in fact, a new structure was built on the west side of the site, that that could in fact, or would likely generate more activity, because you'd not only have a new building, but you'd have some empty space within the existing buildings that would need to be backfilled with other activities. So, the zoning board acknowledged that, and through that came the recommendation for the coordinator position. And finally, the zoning board recognized that perhaps in the past, not perhaps, but in the past, the enforcement of the conditions, in part because they were not specific enough, really wasn't done as, as strongly as it needs to be. So, the zoning board really encouraged that once new conditions are adopted, that, that city staff responsible for implementing the special use permit would be very on track in following up on any violations of those conditions. And finally, what is before you tonight, again, is a recommendation from the zoning board of appeals. It comes to you on a six-one vote. The dissenting zoning board member felt that the conditions restricting the private rental events did not go far enough. He, he would have liked to have seen greater restrictions, whether it be a number or time or complete prohibition. The recommendation suggests that you approve the amended special use permit with the amended conditions as included in the ordinance on page, I think it's thirty-four in your packet, and that as an exhibit to the special use permit, as, as is now done, that you incorporate the updated master plan. Recognizing that some events, that, that more than six amplified events are already booked for 2019, the zoning board recommends that the limitation on the number of amplified events actually take effect in 2020. I, I believe there are about twelve or thirteen events currently booked. So, the recommendation is, is that although the other conditions would be followed, that the number of events not be enforced this year. This really is the first step in some more work that needs to be done. Once this framework is in place, if you should choose to adopt it tonight, the next steps, again, would be the council direct the city manager to continue discussions on the operating agreement, to review financial responsibilities, to understand the impact of the conditions. The Elawa Farm Foundation budget needs to come forward to the city council for the coming A coordinator would be appointed, and the responsibilities of that coordinator detailed, and direction that, once approved, that we would diligently enforce the conditions of the special use permit. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Hi Kathy, I have a couple of questions. So, seven meetings in a year is a lot, and I probably didn't get a chance to look at all of them, and I don't think other council did. I'm just curious, could you give a flavor for how those seven meetings were conducted? You know, the amount of effort and time, and just kind of how they were organized? I'm just kind of curious about the flow of all those meetings to produce what we have tonight.
The first meeting was an introduction. The next couple of meetings, as I recall, the zoning board actually worked through section by section, the master plan and the special use permit. There were two or three meetings then that followed, where based on the zoning board's direction and deliberation, we brought forward various drafts. After the sixth meeting, the zoning board left their discussion open on, I believe, two issues: farm animals and the private rental events and amplified sound. So, it really was a, a process of discussing what they were comfortable with and where the open issues were. At each meeting, my recollection is that there were certainly comments from the Elawa Farm Foundation, from individual neighbors in the Middle Fork Farm subdivision, from the homeowners association, and from Wildlife Discovery Center.
And just a follow-up question. Could you give a sense for how the, how the zoning board thought of just the numbers of the amplified events? And you, so you had mentioned that twelve was in the existing special use, and it's now six, and there was a number just maybe greater. I'm just curious how they thought through that and just what the dialogue was between all the parties.
As is often the case, the zoning board had members who were at zero and who were at twelve. So, it, it's not unusual that you end up somewhere in the middle. But there was considerable, considerable debate, and the zoning board also recognized that their recommendation would have a financial impact. And that's why they added those additional recommendations, because they, they wanted to give the city council a little bit more flavor, more than just forwarding to you the zoning, the special use permit and master plan.
Any other questions, comments?
Maybe I just may come, just so everybody knows, we've been working with Mrs. Miller to come up with the budget, and they've done a lot of work in the context of this special use permit to refine their budget to make it work. And I think they made really good progress on that, so, so far so good.
Go ahead, go ahead. Yes?
I just have a, had a few comments, and one of them was this, when you really are done with these public amplified events, by the time the shuttle service is through, it's eleven forty-five in the evening. That just struck me as a little late to have shuttle buses with headlights going by your private residence. What was the discussion there?
And it was a lengthy discussion around that. I believe in, in probably everything up to the last draft, the zoning board had a ten-thirty end time for events as opposed to eleven. But they also recognized that by reducing the number of events, amplified events by half, that, that that was extreme. So, it, it really was a balance, understanding that how, how do you make the limited number of private events inviting to people? So, it, it was a discussion. The current special use permit did not put any limit on shuttles. So, there, there were some reports of shuttles running quite late. So, they tried to temper that by saying shuttles cannot run any later than forty-five minutes after the end time of the event, or eleven forty-five, whichever is later.
And what's the number of people that can be at one of those? What's the capacity?
The maximum capacity of Elawa Farm is two hundred. And shuttles are required for anything over seventy-five.
Uh-huh. Well, you know, I don't know how the rest of the council feels. That just struck me as kind of late in the evening to have that disturbance in a residential area. The other question that I had was the alcohol use. You know, I'm thinking of, of football games and stuff. Don't they end after halftime or the third quarter or something like that, or whatever inning? I, I think it's much longer than thirty minutes before the end of a game.
The current condition requires alcohol service to stop an hour before the end. But again, the zoning board worked to balance the various interests and also to understand what was really happening there. I think in most cases, alcohol service probably didn't stop an hour before. So, really looking to balance the various interests, to be reasonable to all sides and to create conditions that, that would likely be enforced, that could be enforced. So, again, it, it's, it's all a balance, and I think any of these numbers, the zoning board recognized, could be bumped up a little or bumped down a little. But after their seven meetings and after their twelve months of discussion, this is where they ended, based on all the input they heard.
Well, and I do want to thank the zoning board for their due diligence on this. I think it's extraordinary, the amount of time and effort and input that they solicited, because I did read those minutes going all the way back. And, and it certainly was a thoughtful discussion, and it was well-deliberated. And so, I'm hesitant to nitpick at any portion of it at this stage of the game. I think we have to see how it, how it moves forward and if it addresses some of the concerns of the residents out there. I think my over, overarching concern for that wonderful city asset is that we want it to continue and continue to function, and we want it to be healthy. And I think for it to be healthy, it needs to be financially healthy, and that's where my concern lies. And I think it's going to take a lot of work for all of us to come together to make sure that Elawa continues to be successful and that we can financially support it in the proper manner. And so, I look forward. I don't think this is the end of this discussion by a long shot tonight. And, and good luck to this coordinator, whoever that person may be.
Mr. Mayor, I would just add, and I'm sure a number of us up here have been to events at Elawa, I guess amplified. I can't, I'm trying to remember if it was amplified. It's a magical place. I mean, there are, I've been to a couple of evening events there where you're, you know, you're in this absolutely perfect place to, you know, these are outside things. Although I love the Christmas market too, but watching the sunset, the, the garden, the, the just, I can't think of any place else in Lake Forest that you can have this experience. And so, you know, to, to gather there, and I, I haven't actually been to a lot of parties, not, not weddings, but I, it's, it must be an incredibly special place to have weddings. So, I see, and, and Alderman Rommel makes the point that it is important to raise, to raise money to be able to keep this all going. So, obviously, it is a, it is a balancing issue, but, but this extraordinary almost doesn't feel like enough word to describe this resource. It's really, there's just nothing else quite like it in town, and to make it available to people. I love, we have some special places in town, but they are not available to the public the way this one is. And so, I think we want to really make note of that and do everything we can to be, to figure out the pieces that seem to still be up for discussion and to try to get those right.
Thank you.
I would echo the, the financial side. I realize that we're not addressing that tonight, but I, I just, I, I can't wait to see the budget, because I, I can't understand how you wipe away six events and you function the way you did before. I mean, I, I don't know how you make that up, I guess, is the way I'm thinking about it. So, I, I just, I, I, in a way, I feel like we're, we're balancing so many different interests here, and I'm glad there's several components to this, because if I lived there, I wouldn't be thrilled about the traffic and the noise and the lights. But at the same time, I, I know it is a special place, and so, I, I think we have a lot of work ahead of us on this. I recognize, I certainly recognize the ZBA's work and, and getting us to this point, but I, I do think we have farther to go on this.
Indeed, a work in progress for low on, what, twenty years of evolution. I was on council when we chose to take it on as a city, and there were trees growing up through just about every structure out there through the roof, so.
There were goats.
It took quite a vision.
Remember the goats?
And the goats.
There were goats out there running all over.
The wild boars. Any other thoughts or comments? And yes, the ZBA has done admirable service here to spend the time, because there are And yes, the ZBA has done admirable service here to spend the time, because there are so many contending, not contending, but it's like one of those five or six street intersections in Chicago, right? I mean, you've got open lands, the city owns El Oa, you've got Parks and Rec that has the park. I'm going to miss somebody here, but you've got.
Forests Preserve.
Forests Preserve, the gardeners.
The residents, I forget my sixth.
Did you say open lens, open lands?
Yeah, I said open lands. So it needs a traffic, an air traffic control coordinator. So with that discussion by council, is there any comment or questions or thoughts from the audience regarding this matter tonight? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Catherine Duffy, and I am with the Middle Fork Homeowners Association. I was at all seven of those meetings, and I echo, the ZBA had a tough job. There were meetings that went till 11 o'clock at night, and it was not an easy job. But I have a couple of questions on where we ended up. If you look at the packet Kathy provided of where the special use, current conditions, one of them on amplified music says, when amplified music and sound is authorized anywhere on the site, it must be in compliance with city noise regulations and must end by 10:30. In the recommendation, it says that the event has to end by 11:00. When does the music have to stop? And we've talked about when alcohol stops, when does music stop? And to the point of the shuttles in the neighborhood, Kathy mentioned that she would stop the flashing lights. But you know, those things back up, and you get that beep, beep, beep. So that's still 45 minutes till 11:45 on Saturdays and Sundays in a residential area. So that's still a little bit of an issue. You know, the other thing is the breakdown. You know, if the event ends at 11:00, and if they start cleaning up the glasses and breaking down the tent or knocking down the tables, that's still a lot of noise in a neighborhood. I mean, we're talking about this as a work in progress. There's still some things here that we need to consider, that this is a residential area to talk about how we want to address it. And when you talk about that the events that are already booked in 2019 allowed to happen, you know, we're fine with that. But when you put these regulations, new restrictions in place, are the other things going to happen immediately on the number, on the limitation of events? The only thing we're allowing to continue in 2019 is those that were already booked. That was just one thing we maybe wanted a clarification on. And I think that's it. If I missed anything, I think somebody else on the board will come up.
It's a very thoughtful list, right in the divide, or right in the crux of all those.
You know, we've tried to be very reasonable in this, the homeowners' association. And as it's been mentioned, I think maybe with Jack, we said, a good negotiation is nobody's totally happy at the end. And that's pretty much where we've ended up. But we've done our best.
Understood.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Lansing and city council members. I'm Marina Carney-Purrier. I'm a vice president at El Oa Farm Foundation. I thank everyone involved in getting this revised special use permit to you. It has been a long process, but I believe the collaboration has paid off, and we have a very comprehensive document in the SUP. I hope the tenant lease will be as collaborative as well. I would like to call your attention to a few questions and opportunities for clarification. As I understand this agreement, it is an outline, it is to outline the uses at the farm by the two tenants, El Oa Farm Foundation and Wildlife Discovery Center. With that in mind, daily use as defined in Section 4, I think this needs to be clarified, specifically field trips, we need a definition. If it's a program, is it a field trip? There are 16 that are allowed. Is that for each tenant? Is that two per week for each tenant, or two days per week? Are field trips only during the school year versus camp, or anything that comes via bus? Farm animals, should this just be, which is in Section 6, should this just be animals? Not just farm animals, but any animal, reptile, bird of prey, anything? I just, you know, it seems that farm animals is contemplated versus all animals on the property. The pilot program for the chickens, May 1st to October 1st seems to be a little more reasonable to give the chicks time to actually lay before they're turned into soup. Last paragraph of Section 6, all tenants shall provide any and all licenses versus just El Oa Farm for the chickens, permits or approvals related to keeping farm animals, reptiles, et cetera. I think if you're trying to make a uniform document, it should be specific to both. Section 9, the last line of the first paragraph, and I think it's impact to the, not to a, E-H, and Section 9B, regarding the sound system and its use at the hay barn. I would like, we would like, further clarification, rather definition, on the use of the sound system, as we do not want to be working outside the agreement. Currently, the sound system in the hay barn is in a locked room, per the request of a council member a while back, as Catherine Duffy mentioned, Joanne Miller and, or actually, I think it was Kathy that mentioned, and Kathy Cerniak went and listened to the sound system. They met on site and all agreed the system controlled by the master sound level was not heard in the neighborhood. This system is integral to daytime events, corporate or otherwise, and other events. If you have more than 40 people in the hay barn, if you're not using a microphone, you're not getting your word out, okay? And anything less than permitting this would have tremendous financial impact to the use and rental of the space. Section 14, in the original draft from the ZBA, there's a section that was left out describing what the coordinator is responsible for, and that is assuring that the event management and security staff are on site to monitor and manage all events in a manner consistent with the SUP and other applicable requirements. That's missing from the document that's in the packet today. Section 15, did you really mean the city council is weighing in on emergency access, or will just the term "the city" will suffice? In Section 16, where it contemplates WDC having the only overnight activity on the property because of the chickens, we might actually have to occupy the property if there's an issue with chickens, like raccoons. Also, Section 20, when they talk about lighting, would you consider addressing dark sky options moving forward? Could there be something done about requirements on lumens for the lighting? Just, you have an opportunity to make this a better document. The Garden Market section, it suggests that the city council or the city manager is going to manage and operate the market. I don't think that's what you really mean. I think that should be left to.
Prue and I were going to go out there and.
Okay, well, bring it on, that volunteerism symposium. And then Section 22, under Other, we suggest, not annually, but on a quarterly basis, any issues, or a quarterly basis that we review, you know, what's been going on there. And any issues, complaints, or noncompliance shall be immediately, or in a timely manner, conveyed to the tenants, stakeholders, i.e. Lake Forest Open Lands, Parks and Rec, Lake Forest, I mean, the Lake County Forest Preserve, El Oa, and WDC, so as to maintain good neighbor practices. We look forward to your prompt consideration and clarifications of these matters. Thank you.
Marina, thank you for your thorough review. I noticed people, particularly Kathy, taking notes, so we will.
I'll give her my list.
Thank you. Very, very thoughtful and an odd point, and again, demonstrating the balances that need to be struck here. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Yes, sir.
Hi, Rob Carmichael. I'm the curator of the Wildlife Discovery Center. Just a quick clarification on the licenses, too, which I agree, we need to have consistency. And since we've been there from day one, we do have special permits and licenses from a number of organizations, including U.S. Fish and Wildlife, Illinois Department of Natural Resources, U.S. Department of Agriculture. So we do get inspected regularly, and we're held to really high levels of standards in the industry. So we've always passed with flying colors. So just want to make sure that you folks need that. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Thank you. Yes, sir?
I'm part of the Middle Fork Homeowners Association. I'd like to start by saying that I agree with what Catherine said, the ZBA did a phenomenal job. It was one of the polarizing figures on the side of amplified events. I think they were very professional and listened to all of our input. One thing I would like to highlight on the financials that were brought up, one of the things we've been asking is really what does it take to run El Oa as a concern? And I'm not sure that we really got to that. So when we talk about, will they balance their budget, or what does it take to run this for the community? I don't think there's truly an understanding of what that means. One of the things we've talked about is, you know, return on investments. When we have these events, what does it take to run them? How much do we actually make for them so that we can get the most value for every activity on that site? And I don't know that that, there's either been transparency around that or true understanding of, is that being tracked and monitored? So that's something I would ask as we think about this going forward and understand. And then one other thing on the oversight and enforcement is, I think, something that we really need to think diligently about. An example, I heard of, we were talking about the noise ordinance for leaf blowers, but yet, you know, we have music that can be heard more than 100 feet from El Oa Farm till 11 o'clock at night. We have bus activity that goes to midnight. We have breakdown activity that goes beyond midnight. So I'm really concerned with making sure we have the right level of enforcement and governance around that sort of activity and true understanding of what that's going to mean going forward. And I think that we all support El Oa as a community asset. I would say that, to me, I really struggle with weddings adding to that as a benefit. I think there's real benefit in having community events there. Sunset's wonderful. It happens long before 11 o'clock at night. So again, why would we need to have people that appreciate an outdoor environment well beyond dark at any time of year? Thank you.
Thank you. Good points, and particularly on enforcement. I think the city has a fresher and better appreciation of the need for enforcement in this kind of complex arrangement. Any other comments from the audience? Seeing none.
I just had one question following up on your comments. Kathy, can we, before the budget meeting, can we get an actual breakdown for the last, say, whatever's practical, five years of exactly the number of amplified events that occurred there? I saw varying numbers in some of the testimony before the ZBA when I went through the minutes. I'm not sure which numbers were accurate, because that would give us an idea of, are we going from 20 events to six events? Are we going from 12 events to six events? And perhaps an estimate of the revenue that those generated. I think that would help me to understand the true repercussion of limiting these public events, the financial repercussions.
We'll try and clarify that information. I know we had various pieces of it, but we will clarify that as you move forward with your budget. I also might suggest that because this is a first step, and because the zoning board acknowledged that this isn't a perfect document, that if you choose to do so and move forward with this as a framework, we can certainly, in tandem with negotiating the operating agreement and finalizing the budget, make some further tweaks and then bring this all back to you as a packet. But moving forward and getting a special use, an amended special use permit in place, an updated master plan, the zoning board felt would really help to support those discussions. So I know there's different tweaks that have been talked about, but I think you, as a council, don't want to necessarily go back and have the discussion that the zoning board had.
I would just add that in our discussions with the executive director, she had put together a budget before this ZBA recommendation, as though the El Oa Farms Foundation was proceeding as they have in the past. And then after this, she prepared another budget in the context of this. So we have the ability to look at where they would have been without this and where they are going to be with this. And that's pretty helpful, and that'll be, we can share that with everybody.
Yeah, that's helpful, too. But I'd also like that other information of the actual number of events that were held out there and what revenue those generated.
Yeah, clearly, probably the biggest subsequent step is with the operating agreement is the enterprise model here, where it's going. It's a city asset. We need to make sure that it has a sustainable future, certainly in the care of the buildings at a minimum, plus all the community things we'd like to do. So it's very integral. It's not lost on anyone. It's just, it's a work in progress in view of several changes, so. Are we ready? This is a long thing here.
I just have a question. So the comments that were made by the HOA and the foundation, are those some things that if we pass this now, we can then incorporate later? Is that what you're thinking, Kathy? I mean, because I think there were some substantive points raised. I know the operating agreement just gives us some flexibility, but can you clarify that, please?
Yeah, certainly the typos, the inconsistencies, we can clarify before we have the ordinance signed. But yes, the other points that really were points that were weighed by the zoning board, we can certainly discuss as part of the budget and operating agreement. Again, there's nothing that would prevent the city council from amending this in three months or six months, and you can, you don't have to go through a year process. Going forward, we should be looking after each year at anything that needs to be tweaked and do that very simply and quickly. Uses at El Oa are going to continue to evolve.
So would we incorporate the comments, particularly by Marina, tonight? You know, some of those seemed.
I would suggest on the floor, it's difficult to make substantive comments, but I don't have a written copy of that, so it would be helpful to get that. But again, I think we can make the nonsubstantial changes to the ordinance as you approve it tonight, and then the points that were more substantial in nature can certainly be considered as part of the operating agreement discussions, the budget discussions, and then we can bring this ordinance back to you, again, 60 days, 90 days, six months, whatever it takes. But I would suggest that getting something in place is really going to help those other discussions move forward.
But we need to have a budget discussion, is my understanding, right? And we can't do that until we have the operating.
No, but I think we need to give them the focus to move forward, because they have a season coming up that they need to attend to.
Yeah, and then we're going to have several more shots of this.
Come back to it.
But Kathy, is one of our options, so it looks like the motion says if we choose to, we can waive first reading. Does it make sense to do some of that cleaning up and try to do this again in a couple of weeks? Or you prefer that we go with the waiving first reading?
Given the time of year, I think the time of year, because we're moving toward events very quickly. Yeah. to assure that we can continue discussions on the operating agreement and budget as promptly as possible, I think there's value, if you choose to do so, in waiving first reading tonight and approving the ordinance, knowing that we can bring this back with any other action you take related to Eloua.
All right. Yeah.
I might say also, that's the PPL's recommendation.
Yeah, good.
All right. If there's no further questions or comments, may I have a motion to waive first reading and grant final approval to the ordinance approving amendments to the special use permit for Eloua Farm, including modifications to the conditions of approval and updates to the master plan in accordance with the Zoning Board of Appeals recommendation. And by incorporated motion, direct that private rental events already scheduled for 2019 be allowed to exceed the number of allowed by the revised conditions. These events in 2019 must comply with the revised conditions relating to the operational aspects of the new conditions. Number two, direct staff to update procedures related to the overall coordination of activities in the area and enforcement of the conditions of the special use permit and the consequences of violations. Number three, direct staff and the property and public lands committee to continue to examine the financial aspects of Eloua Farm as negotiations continue around modification to the Eloua Farm's operating agreement. Is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
This is a roll call vote.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Rommel?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you. Good discussion. This is a step forward. There being no other specific agenda items, unless there's any questions or thoughts from council, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.